Okay, we're ready, right? We can start? Yes?
Is...
I believe they are.
Okay. And I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission on Tuesday, April 27. In accordance with adopted legislation in the current state of emergency, this meeting is being conducted virtually via Zoom. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Okay. Erin, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartis?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Richardson? You're on mute, Mark.
Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Smith?
Here in Berkeley.
Commissioner Stern?
Here, I'm actually in Beverly Hills, Michigan.
Commissioner Trotto?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan. Okay, that brings us to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any modifications or motions to approve?
Motion to approve?
A second.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Uh, yes.
Mark, it seems like you're here in two different settings. Could you... I'm gonna mute that one, unmute this one. See if that works. I apologize. Uh, Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
All right, the minutes from March 23rd, that was our regular meeting. Does anyone have any changes or additions to those?
Um, I do. I think I missed that one because I had COVID. But I'm listed as present.
Well, we're glad you're feeling better, Julie.
Thank you.
Any other changes?
Motion to approve?
For it.
Erin, could you call it all?
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. We also have minutes from the April 6th work session. Any changes to those? Or motions to approve?
I think I was at that one and I'm listed, I'm not on those minutes.
Okay. My apologies, I...
It's alright.
Okay, was there a moment? Um, a motion and a second with the change that Julie's added to that one?
Uh, motion with Julie's changes.
Approved. Second.
Could you call the roll, Erin, please?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. I'm going to leave and get back.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Any communications tonight?
Um, the only communication we had is late this afternoon, I received an email memo from Jennifer Finney, the DDA Director, uh, in relation to one of the items that we will be discussing, the expanded uses in the downtown district.
Okay, so I assume we'll touch on that then?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, then I'll move on to citizen comment. If any members of the public wish to speak during the appropriate agenda item, we ask that you please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you've called in. Comments can also be submitted to planning@berkleymish.net. Just a reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less um, and to also state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to comment? I don't think I see anyone, correct? And we haven't received any emails either. Okay. Then I will close citizen comment and move on to the CIP.
Uh, thank you. Um, this item comes to you again from the City Manager's Office. Uh, this was reviewed in draft form at the March meeting and as per our standard procedure is brought before you again um, for your motion to recommend to City Council. Uh, City Manager Matt Baumgartner is here to go over it and to go through his presentation.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, instead of doing a line-by-line analysis as we did in March, I prepared a slideshow presentation that covers much of the same topic areas but groups them a little bit differently. Uh, Mick puts context behind this plan and uh, actually helps us highlight the good work that we're doing with the investments in the capital improvements plan. So, um, here we go. Uh, first little bit of background for those that are unfamiliar with this particular type of planning. Uh, in general, a capital improvements plan is a plan by which a community uh, lays out the next several years as far as how they look to invest uh, in their different capital facilities, whether that be um, in our case, it's a lot of, it's some vehicles, it is some of our parks, it's some of our facilities, uh, roads, sidewalks, uh, any of the big hard concrete, uh, not actual cart, not literally concrete, but um, uh, physical tactile items that we invest in. Uh, this does have a counterpart plan called the Capital Equipment Replacement Plan, uh, which the city has maintained for many years now. It also helps us plan out um, replacements of existing equipment. So, in that situation, a truck that we've had for a long time, an initial purchase would show up on this document, uh, replacement of that vehicle would show up on our CERP, our Equipment Replacement Plan. So, uh, the city does, so I say that to say that this is not all of the investments we make in the community. Um, but this certainly helps us guide uh, the spending and look long-term on the capital investments that we make within the community. Uh, we'll try my best not to do a line, a word-for-word on this, but I fall back into my old teaching habits sometimes and uh, do enough just reading text on page. So I apologize if I, if I do that. Uh, what I've also outlined here is the approval process by which we follow to adopt this. Uh, you'll see step one through six have already happened, uh, including the most recent step that involved this uh, body, which was our March meeting, uh, where we review the document itself. Uh, as the arrow indicates, we find ourselves here at step seven. Uh, step seven is when the Planning Commission reviews this, makes the first of two approvals and then a recommendation uh, that the council fund the items outlined in the documents uh, you have in your attached packet here. So, uh, steps seven and eight, of course, will follow um, immediately after this, uh, should the Planning Commission approve and recommend. Uh, this has been incorporated into a draft agenda, which will be reviewed by the City Council. They also do a line-by-line like we did here in March, uh, but of the entire budget during a work session in May, uh, that is the 11th and 12th, and then finally it will come before them per, uh, per the charter on the third Monday of the month, uh, which in this case is May 17th, uh, yeah, May 17th. Uh, so that is where they will actually adopt not only this document, but also set rates, set, uh, set millage rates, water rates, and adopt the uh, operating budget itself. Uh, so a little summary here, uh, the CIP, Berkeley-specific CIP, uh, helps us plan all the way through the far-flung future of June 30th, 2028. Uh, that is the next seven fiscal years included here. We've done a great job, uh, over the last three years of of adding to this. We initially started off with a five-year plan, uh, then it grew to six and then finally seven. Uh, so obviously next year, uh, we'll actually be looking at the 22, 23 as a near term, and then we will add the 28, 29 budget. So we will forever be looking seven years in the future and try to predict as many items as we possibly can, uh, so that we have some, and that's the way that we turn our plans into actual actions. So we're excited about that. Uh, again, assessed annually. Not all departments, you'll notice here, have capital needs, but in this particular year, uh, we've got capital needs for the Recreation Department, Library, uh, Public Works, Public Safety, and the Downtown Development Authority. You'll notice that the Municipal Building is also listed here. Uh, this is sort of a catch-all as we discussed last month. Uh, not only is this cover improvements to City Hall itself, but also general citywide improvements that don't have necessarily a single department to call home. Uh, you'll see this includes, um, uh, in a little bit, you'll see this includes wayfinding and some parking lot improvements that we have built into this plan. So for a little bit of context, you'll see, uh, contrasting the near term to the, to the long term. So the, the one graph in front of you here has um, sort of a breakdown of what departments have the largest capital needs. Probably not surprising, given the amount of infrastructure that they handle. Your Public Works Department, both in the near term and the long term, are the most to resemble Pac-Man here. Um, just a purple version, if you will. Uh, so they are by far our largest generator of capital needs because the city has many roads, uh, many miles of road, many miles of sidewalk, uh, water mains, sewer main. It all falls under um, the, the good care of our Department of Public Works. Um, they have no small task when they're creating their budgets and their long-term plans. Alright, some of the highlights, some of the things that we're particularly proud of, uh, in this one, um, wanted, um, if you'll pardon Madam Chair, the, the moment, couple of slides worth of bragging, we're pretty excited about sustained infrastructure, sustained infrastructure investments. That's really what the highlights portions here are going to center around, uh, particularly in road investments. Thanks to Berkeley voters, uh, we'll have 1.1, a little bit over 1.1 million dollars annually devoted to roads, uh, specifically from our infrastructure fund. And that is the, uh, that is a fund that was approved by Berkeley voters in 2018. Uh, so we're excited about that. Also, we've got some state funds that we dedicated to the city roads as well from our major and local road fund. Again, that's a state allocation that, uh, um, fill, refills those coffers each year. Um, and then also, uh, we have $170,000 annually dedicated to spray patching, crack sealing, and overbanding. Um, spray patching for, I think most of our probably familiar by this point, uh, but for any of the millions watching at home, uh, spray patch is a actual, as it sounds, it's a spray emulsion that actually gets jetted into potholes and creates its own, um, patch. And so it's, we like it more than say just your cold patch, which we use on a temporary basis, uh, but often comes back out. The, um, the spray patch, uh, is heated and cools within that hole and stays, and is far more durable. Crack sealing is, is unsurprisingly exactly what it sounds like, and overbanding is something that we do in conjunction with crack sealing, and that helps hold, hold our asphalt roads together. Both, uh, both, um, uh, spray patch and overbanding tend to work best on our asphalt streets. Again, contrasting the annual budget, the annual, um, contribution, and then, uh, also making sure to note the total over the course of of the entire, uh, plan here. So, uh, really excited about the amount of investment we're making. It's almost $10 million worth of roads in just seven years. Uh, when I also give a nod, uh, we're in the midst of a Berkeley citywide sidewalk replacement cycle. Um, so we're also making some good investments in the city sidewalks as well. And you'll see there's, um, uh, the red sections are the ones that we plan to do this year. Not only are we doing two new sections, uh, sort of the, the from north to south, you look at the middle areas there, uh, but you'll see an area that's listed as 20 and 21. We're actually going back and redoing or catching some of the ones that have moved a little bit or have become dangerous or in need of immediate, um, effect in the, uh, the section that we've already done. So, and then we see in 2022, we'll be looking at the, basically the two corners there uh, and doing each of those. One of the reasons why we held off is that actually, uh, we're not the only ones that investing in our infrastructure. Consumers, uh, Energy will be doing some work all along the, uh, the section between 12 and Webster, uh, from Coolidge to Greenfield. So that's gonna involve quite a bit of sidewalk work on their part as they replace, uh, gas mains and gas leads into individual homes. So, we'll be working in conjunction with one another. It's nice when we can plan ahead, uh, it's nice when they do the same, and we have an opportunity to align those plans to make sure that we're not being redundant. Another benefit of a long-term planning process that we go and undergo each year. Uh, looking at, of course, our, uh, water and sewer investment as well. This again is another substantial investment over the course of seven years. Uh, you'll see that we have plans for a sustained annual investment throughout the course of the CIP at about $1.6 million. Uh, breaking this down a little bit further, that includes water main replacement. That includes, um, yeah, water main investment, we've got a large project set for this upcoming year at about $1.8 million. Uh, but then even at, even each subsequent year, we're looking at a, uh, just over half a million dollars in additional replacement work. Uh, part of that is going to include $400,000, um, lead and service line removals. This is, uh, we're working in conjunction with the state. Uh, this is one of our least favorite terms, an unfunded mandate. This came down to us a couple of years ago. Uh, we've been working with the state. The state's been sort of updating and changing its, its standards and what its desired goals are for this project. But, uh, we recently got what we think is the final word on what the state's expectations are. And us here locally, it's gonna be about a $400,000 annual investment in our city sewer lines. Again, this is all, um, this is all to make sure that people have a high level of trust that their drinking water is safe. In Berkeley, we have, we test each year and we continually show that that is the case, uh, but this is gonna add, uh, an additional peace of mind for our residents. Uh, likewise, uh, another investment that we're making in our water and sewer program is, uh, we're, we're gonna be relining, uh, well, continue to reline about a mile of our combined sewer each year. So the structural relining that we do actually builds a brand-new, high-density plastic line within the existing line that we have. Uh, so it's a, it's a way to replace the line without having to, uh, break the surface at all. So we don't dig up, we don't have to pull roads, sidewalks, street out, uh, and it just slides right inside the existing line, creates a brand-new durable material that is supposed to have a useful life of about 100 years or so. Uh, so again, we've got about 30% of our system lined at this point, and we continue to add about another 1 to 2% a year, uh, by doing about a mile's worth of actual piping a year. Uh, and then last but not least, uh, we've got about a $25,000 to $40,000 investment in our asset management program. The city, uh, for the last half decade or so, has been utilizing GS, GIS software to, um, to basically create a comprehensive map of all the, uh, infrastructure we have in the city. So that includes water mains, sewer mains. Uh, recently includes all the street signs in the city, includes the road conditions, sidewalk conditions, locations of trees. Uh, it's all put into the same, uh, GIS, uh, system, and then we use that to plot out, um, and really pinpoint, uh, infrastructure needs and make our resources go as far as possible. Uh, not only is our DPW, uh, really embraced the use of GIS, but, um, Erin Schluto is herself an expert of this. Um, she's, she's used this system for a long time and has added quite a bit of expertise to our team in her time being here, uh, with utilizing this program. Her and, or Erin and Derek actually jointly presented, um, at a, uh, conference last year on the Berkeley Way of utilizing GIS and the, the benefits that it's had here. So not only are we impressed with the two of them here locally, uh, but they have been, um, they have been asked to speak at the state level as well on, on how good of a job we're doing using this. So, it certainly warrants a sustained investment. Uh, next item I want to highlight here is our investment in the parks and the, the quality of life that comes along with living in Berkeley. Uh, we have in our plan here, uh, about a $2.3 million investment in our parks. Uh, this one goes through, you'll notice in the, uh, the CIP, this only goes through 2025. That, um, that program aligns with our recently adopted five-year Parks Plan. Uh, it was adopted by council in December of last year. Uh, it takes us through five years of, uh, investment and improvements in the city's park facilities and really all things recreation. So, uh, we're excited about that. Uh, we, we really feel that we have a mandate from the people that participated in this. We, just like with the master planning process, we, we did a number of surveys, communication events, informational events, all to, uh, really get to the crux of what people are looking for in their parks. And we're uh, excited that this plan, um, funds that. We're actually in the, the second fiscal year, uh, of attacking this. And so, uh, as you'll see, uh, we really take this, uh, this plan seriously. We're really taking the mandate from the community seriously, uh, and the level of investment we plan to make. Uh, again, this is, and this didn't come out of the blue. Uh, we've maintained a five-year Parks Plan for many years now. Uh, this one, uh, does great work in building off of our previous one, which was, uh, 2016 through the 2020 plan. Um, so, might as well, uh, start there. I think on your sheet included in your packet, uh, the CIP, I'm gonna try to follow the same departmental order that this one does. Um, so this, that one starts with the Parks and Recreation Department. We'll do the same here. Uh, you'll see the, uh, about 350,000 over the course of the next five years is dedicated to Oxford Merchant Parks, but again, noting that, uh, we currently are in the midst of a renaming contest. The community, uh, has submitted a couple of great, um, uh, uh, potential names for that area. We look to, in combining the, those two properties, we also need a brand-new name that reflects, uh, the community and the excitement we have around this investment here. Uh, so you'll see the breakout here, the additional play equipment, the seating, picnic tables and shades, uh, also the additional park pavilion and, uh, parking around the perimeter of that park as well. Uh, we got in a little bit of a conversation last time, uh, we did have to break this project up across a couple of different fiscal years in order to make the full investment, uh, to get it to where we wanted to go. So, um, we've, the last two fiscal years, we've been working on this. Uh, we do see the next two fiscal years as well. Uh, one of the things that we really wanted to do was, um, again, create a nice shady place for all people. Uh, people, people think of parks as just for kids. Uh, that's certainly not gonna be the case with this one. Uh, so additional parking, pavilion areas, shady spots. Uh, it's not on this plan, but, uh, the park will have Wi-Fi. So we'll have opportunities for people to go and sit and have a nice place to, to work. Uh, and there's also gonna be a pavilion in this one like we have in JC Park, although that is, we're gonna give the year, the park sort of a year to um, figure out what a, a normal level of, of traffic is, uh, before we end up adding that brand-new function in the pavilion. But that will be rentable like the, uh, JC one is. So, um, mark it in your calendars now to hold, uh, kids, grandkids, best friends, roommates, kids. Uh, whoever needs to host a party out of there, uh, the pavilion will be ready after, uh, not this fiscal year, but the next. We also see, uh, moving down to Angel Park, we see this is a park that we jointly, um, maintain with the school district. Uh, so on our side, we'll have investments in the ball field surface. We have to make those every couple of years. Also, there's some fence repairs that are needed there. Anybody that, um, that has kids or has gone to play at that park, you'll notice that the fence needs to be replaced. And then also, uh, in fiscal year 24, 25, those base, those tennis courts are, uh, owned and maintained by the city. And as you see, we'll pay a pretty substantial investment in making sure that those remain top-notch. So about $100,000 into refurbishing those tennis courts there. We've seen a boom of tennis, uh, in the last couple of years. It's really, uh, all of our tennis courts have seen increased use. Uh, it was one thing that came through very clearly in the, uh, five-year Recreation Master Plan. So, not only here, but you'll see an investment in each of our tennis courts as we go through the, the Recreation Section here. Uh, Lazenby is next to Rogers Elementary. It's, uh, we'll have some drainage work happening. I apologize, I didn't add the year there, but I believe it's, uh, in 23, 24. Um, this, I've only been working off one screen here, so I can't toggle back and forth, but uh, that'll be a real improvement. Lazenby is largely, uh, used for baseball functions, so there's a substance, a large outfield there. Um, so anybody who plays, uh, center, right, or left field will not have to worry about wet shoes anymore after, uh, after we add some drainage there. Alright, last, or, uh, next, moving on here, about $100,000 for Friends Park, which was named in honor of the, uh, Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation. It was formerly Oxford Towers Park. In fact, I believe it's still listed in your CIP that way. Um, but Friends Park, we'll see likewise, an investment in the tennis courts for repair or replacement in the upcoming fiscal year. Also, adding some adult exercise equipment. Um, the, one of the reasons why, one of the ways it got its old name was it is fairly close to, um, Oxford Towers. And so, uh, we see those residents, when they get out and, uh, start moving around, it's within walking distance. So we're excited about the, uh, the opportunity to add some, some useful items to that park for the people that use it the most. Uh, moving on to JC Park, which, uh, is our, uh, second-largest park now that we've combined, uh, merchants and Oxfords. We'll see nearly a million dollars of investment there over the next five years. We're very proud of that number. Uh, so we'll, this includes everything from, uh, engineering for future improvements to new playground equipment, uh, updating our accessible pads to make sure that they're at the standards that the ADA require. Uh, also updating the pavilion there, uh, installing a bathroom, which, uh, we've utilized porta-johns there for the last several years, uh, which are nice, but they're not, um, uh, they're not, just not, not the same options as having an actual bathroom in place there. Um, and then again, for, and then we also put an item in there for any additional engineering, should it be needed. Uh, again, we've, there's, uh, any number of things that we want to tackle there to make improvements, but it really is a, a great park. Um, Bacon, I know a lot of the long-timers, uh, call it Bacon Park. Uh, we're actually in the conversation right now, maybe, uh, returning to the days of yore and, um, going back to officially, uh, referring to that as, as Bacon Park again, because it is on Bacon Road. Alright, uh, Community Park, uh, Community Park is also a large park. It goes all the way from the, um, parking, or the tennis courts that you see right on Catalpa and Robina, all the way down and encompasses three different baseball fields. Uh, so it's a large, large park for us. Um, so that's, again, you'll see, that's one of the reasons why this number is as large as it is. So over the course of the next five years, it's a uh, just over a half a million dollar investment in those parks as well. And that includes new playground equipment. Uh, again, the theme of tennis courts, that is our largest bundling of tennis courts. They're also our most popular. Uh, the high, in fact, even this evening, I was, uh, just at Community Park coaching my kid's soccer team. And, um, that's, all three tennis courts are, actually, there's six tennis courts there. They're all in use right now. Um, there is a, the US Soccer, US Tennis Association, I probably have that acronym wrong, uh, but they host tournaments out of there. Our Anderson and the High School both, uh, utilize their, those courts for their, uh, school teams. Uh, so we work with the school district very closely on those. Improvements to landscaping, uh, likewise, updating the accessible pathways that run through there. And then also looking at a LED conversion for the lighting in, um, the, the fifth and final year of the five-year master plan. So, again, these are the kind of investments that will have a return on investment over time. Last but not least, another jointly, um, joint, um, park with the school district at Patengill. Uh, much like you saw with the rest of them, we have a, um, some monies for the baseball field surface material and then fence repair as well. That'll be in the 23, 24 budget year. Community Center itself, um, not a whole lot of investment. Obviously, uh, we, we still hold out hope that we can, um, do something wholly different at that location. Uh, but near term, we do need to dedicate, uh, about $5,000 for parking lot improvements. And then, um, should we still be operating out of that building in the 24, 25, um, fiscal year, uh, we will have to make some investments in for wall repairs, uh, because of the, we have some foundational issues in that building. Uh, mostly because of the way it was built and the, the fact that it's lasted so much, uh, longer than its, its planned life. Mostly because of the way it was built and the fact that it's lasted so much longer than its planned life. We do see some separation in the wall, in the east and south walls that will need to be remedied. That will be about a $35,000 investment. And so again, it's even keeping what we have is not, is becoming difficult for that particular facility. And last but not least, for Parks and Rec, a potential $100,000 investment into our downtown area in conjunction with the DDA. Part of what, the part of the feedback that the department has received so far is they'd like to see some sort of downtown pocket park. We have tentatively looked at Dorothea as a potential location for that, if you can envision it. It's along Coolidge and between Coolidge and the high school's practice field. So think of Camelot Cleaners, think of Sugar Kisses, those are the two businesses that are on either side. The city has some public parking along last stretch as well. It's, it's not a long piece of property. It's fairly contained, it's not often used. We think it might be a good potential location for a downtown pocket park. I believe that wraps up Parks and Rec. Next on your sheet is the library. The library isn't a huge driver of capital expenses, but there are some investments that are needed there. In total, it's about about $548,000 over the course of the capital plan here. So a little bit just over about a million or half a million dollars or so. Maintenance items, not surprisingly, we, you know, we need to paint on a regular rotation. So interior and exterior painting is included in the 21, 21, 22, and then six years later in the 27, 28 fiscal years. And then reupholster of library furniture is next year. Upcoming items, updates for carpet for our interiors. One of the things that, the next item is one that we're really excited about. The library staff, as well as the library board have been talking about the potential for individualized study rooms. So mostly, obviously you go to the library, you gotta be very quiet. But if you're working with a partner or a study buddy, then you're going to need to converse at least at some level of volume. These would be the answer to that. You'd be able to go inside these rooms, close the door, and then you and whomever you're working with will be able to collaborate on projects or study together. We think even post COVID, these will be a popular item because people, it'd be helpful, people can close themselves off. And if you're typically a home worker now at this point, you don't go in the office anymore. This would be an opportunity for you to go get out of the house, maybe take a meeting. It has any number of fantastic uses. So we're excited, unfortunately, we couldn't do it this year, but excited to get that moving next year. This could also be considered a maintenance item, but we need to redo our HVAC system. And then we've got some parking lot repairs as well. Next up, the municipal building, as I mentioned, it's sort of cover all for us. Specifically, City Hall projects include about $300,000 for interior reconfiguration of our workspaces. City Hall, the really, the layout has not changed in several decades, but the type of work and the way that we, the way that we work has changed a great deal. So we're getting to the point where the, the physical layout of the interior of our City Hall just does not yields as efficient works ability as, as we, we would like. We do have some monies in a, in a building fund that was dedicated to, for improvements to City Hall, as well as the former District Court location, the 45A. So we'll be utilizing those funds. It's not a general funds expense per se, because it has offsetting revenues from that account. So we hope, again, we hope we make good use of this. There's some security improvements we want to make. We're really in just the early planning stages for this though. So we don't have a whole lot of, we've got a lot of the goals, but we don't have a whole lot of the physical plans drawn up as of yet. More broadly, as far as citywide projects, we have a partnership with the DDA. We're likewise investing in the wayfinding around the community. You can still see a lot of these older signs. Most of the time they're brown, either by the colors that were selected or the fact that it's just rusted to that point. But either way, we're trying to get away from the brown and get something more vibrant, something more updated, certainly something eye catching. And very useful signage that will help people navigate their way around the community. The last portion of this is $500,000. We actually pushed this and we had this for this year when we discussed this in March. But as I mentioned then, this is one of the things that we would be potentially having to push back to a subsequent fiscal year. And then it did end up happening in the course of our budget conversation. So we're looking at next fiscal year, not this, not the upcoming one, but the one thereafter, 22, 23. Having a, a brand new parking lot in the West 12 Mile area that will, we see these as economic development tools, the better, the more publicly provided parking you have in an area, the better use private property owners can make of their parcel. They don't have to dedicate as much to parking spots. They could really fill out their parcel with as much building as the zoning code will allow. So we're looking forward to that and the commercial areas through there. Moving down, Public Works, like I said, by far the largest. And the CIP here is to the tune of about $26 million, nearly $27 million. Again, trying to stay away from reading slide to slide, but you'll see the investments we want to make in our sidewalk improvements. And not only is that, not only is that through special assessments where we partner with cost sharing on our, with our residents. But we're also making investments in the sidewalk ramps, making sure those are ADA compliant. But also making a substantial investment in a new walking path that will connect 12 Mile to Webster along Coolidge. Those that are frequently runners, runners or travel that area know that we currently have a path there. It's asphalt, it's very close to the fence line. Sometimes the overgrowth along that fence line actually prevents you from using that sidewalk. We're going to pull it back from the fence, broaden it, probably utilize concrete and make it a nice, very pleasant walk that'll, you know, connect our residence to Rory Oak and then into the 13 Woodward Development as well. So very excited to see that come to fruition. Next up, our DPW Yard and Offices, like I mentioned with City Hall. This is a situation again where the way we work and the area that we work in don't align as well as they used to. So we, over the, you see, over the entire plan, we've got hitting this project bit by bit, looking to make about a $1.5 million investment in our DPW offices and yard. Not only does the, the, everything from the salt dome to the, to where we stash our gravel and building materials need to be reorganized. But also the physical workspace that our team there works out of needs to be redone as well. So we're going to be repurposing an existing building. We won't be building new on that site, but we have a space that we'll be renovating into the new DPW offices. They'll include a space for our staff, an updated break room, updated locker rooms, updated shower facilities. A more welcoming entrance and workspace for visitors there, but also our employees that stay there each day. Some updated conference area with some new technology interface that we just aren't able to do in our existing building. Good, let's say, this is going to be positive all the way around. It's that, that group does a ton of work and they have done so in some, some aged facilities. And excited to make some changes there for them, for that department. Moving on to public safety, this is again, another group that is in a, their building is not as old, but we don't want to see it age beyond its years. So we're looking to make investments into the HVAC system. The current boiler is original to the building, which was completed in 1988. It's not a very efficient system. It was good for its day, but technology has certainly improved. So we're going from about something in the mid 70s as far as energy efficiency to something in the high 90s for energy efficiency. So we see this as a, as a savings long-term. We need to get into really the nuts and bolts of it to find out what it is. But in our initial conversations with our preventative maintenance HVAC contractor, they've talked about the savings that this has the potential to yield. So absolutely excited about that. And then another $15,000 in security updates. Again, you see some of the examples listed here. This is in conjunction with the lobby project that's happening this fiscal year. So it'll be, the lobby will be far more welcoming, far more safe, will be able to control the access a lot better than we do now. So it's again, we see nothing but positives coming out of this for sure. Moving on, communications and infrastructure is also being updated. This is something that we will forever be investing in as soon as we get a radio system in place. You know, it's time to start planning for the next one, one that will do a little bit better. So we got some radio antenna updates that'll help us for long-term communication that'll reach all the way out to Woodward, all the way up and down 12 Mile. So again, we continue to, we are typically a hub for the law enforcement agencies during Dream Cruise and to lesser extent Cruise Fest. Again, this just makes us that much more attractive as a hub for law enforcement for, for managing these large events. And again, some of the radio system equipment that's happening here as well. So it's again, about a $15,000 investment there. Next up, some officer amenities and wellness. This includes again, security upgrades for our, for our door system. That was something that was in, when we discussed in March, that was in the next budget year. It has since moved to the 23 or 22, 23 budget year. $100,000 investment in the basement area. Hopefully none of you have found yourselves in the basement of public safety, but it's typically been a records room. Our shooting range is down there. There's a lot of space, but not a lot of useful space for us. And in order to free up some areas in our upper floors, we're going to move some of the functions we have downstairs, including our recreation facilities, wellness centers, weightlifting areas, things like that, that keep, that would keep our officers healthy, safe in the building and ready to go in a moment's notice. Likewise, locker room investments as well for our male and our female officers. Last but not least, also keeping our vehicles safe and, and long, and better working condition for longer. We like to install a carport along the, would that be the west side of the building? That we see where our vehicles are parked now, we would have an overhang there that would shield them from the weather, the rain, the snow. And we hope this makes an eventual switch to hybrid and electric vehicles possible as well. All right, last department to cover here. Our Downtown Development Authority, again, not a large capital department for us, not a large capital fund. So you see, it's about $360,000 over the course of the CIP. A portion of that is to continuing the phase two of our wayfinding project, again, in conjunction with the city. Streetscape, you'll see an annual investment of about $30,000 into things like benches and trash cans, or those two ones that we're, we're discussing now. But also hopefully eventually our poles, our signage, things like that. Anywhere where you see some rust, some wear, peeling paint, chip paints. This sustained investment is working really hard to make all of that a thing of the past. So you see nothing but the beautiful stores and attractive places to dine and shop and entertain yourselves in Berkeley. So we don't have any, we don't have any of those little distractions along the way. This upcoming fiscal year, the West 12 section, which we consider to be Tyler all the way to Greenfield. We have an additional allotment for improvements in that area. It's a area that hasn't had a lot of investments. I think most of the businesses along there will tell you that. So we, additional planters, benches, streetscape materials, really make sure that, that anybody who walks up and down that section of the city knows that this is also a favorite of ours. This is also our downtown. It's also full of businesses that we're incredibly proud to call Berkeley's own. So we're, again, there's a subcommittee that was formed with the DDA headed up by Brian Zifkin of Zaleman's Treasures. He's working with area businesses on what they want to see for investment. And the DDA was more than happy to facilitate some of those things. Finally, the, there's a plaza project. We've been discussing this now for a couple of years. The school district has been kind enough to dedicate, dedicate a section of land that formerly had a house and business on it into a plaza along Coolidge. This would be, right now it's sort of just an open space right now, but this is in place of where the, sort of where the community garden used to be as well. In partnership with the school district and the city, the DDA has, has budgeted for a $60,000 investment into that plaza. We're still working through the planning phase. We had to sort of go back to the drawing board and what we hoped for in a previous set of plans. It just, it ended up being far more expensive than we were able to do. But there is a, again, a subcommittee working there, working very hard and it'll be a nice collaboration between those three entities. And finally, just again, trying to add some additional context. You see each of the years, the, the level of investment. It's not uncommon for the near-term ones to be a little bit higher than the farther ones out. That's as we get a better idea of what may not last as long as we had once hoped. Sometimes you see those earlier, the, nearer the bars are being the higher ones. But again, there's a lot of planning that goes into this and we tend to find it to be a useful tool. At the March meeting, I talked about trying to find some previous years, what those investments were, to sort of see how the trend goes. And what I found was there wasn't really a, a trend there to be had. If you look just at the fiscal year that we're in right now, you'll see that that, that first bar is twice as high because of, we purchased the, the fire truck, the new fire truck, the new ladder truck for public safety. As well as the, the investments that we've made at Merchant Oxford Park. So again, these trends just go up and down, up and down, up and down. So hopefully this is useful in setting some of the contexts. And hopefully this is a little bit better than trying to read numbers off a tiny screen for asking the planning commissions consideration and approval this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Matt. So we had the chance, first of all, is this a public hearing, Erin? I didn't see that. I wasn't sure if we had to have one. Okay. Okay. So we had the opportunity, obviously at our last meeting, to ask a lot of our initial questions on this. I don't think too much has changed. Does anyone have any questions on the capital improvement plan?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the road repairs, do you have a map showing what has been repaired and what is planning to be repaired? I know they have a list of roads, but, and when they're planning on being done.
Yeah, so we, we have on the city's website, we set up a whole tab for infrastructure projects. And there's a map on there that has, it's the city with a bunch of little yellow dots. That is the 183 separate locations that we're doing this year and last, between last year and this year. You, I believe, last time I looked at it, it was sort of shaded red and blue like we did with the sidewalk project.
Can't seem to find that one, so, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mark.
Where is the water main that's going to be replaced?
We, for, actually I don't have that answer for you this year. We're still in some of the planning phase there. We know the scope and we know the, the size of which we want to replace, but I don't have the actual location for you just yet. We're finalizing that now.
There's a map on here that shows the 2021 line locations, but what shows what's already been replaced?
As far as the sewer lines?
Yes. I mean, I see new locations, but I don't see what's already been done.
You're right, I'm not sure that we've generated that map in the past. That might be useful for folks that are just generally curious about it.
Okay. I hate to keep asking questions, but the walkway from 12 Mile to Webster. Have you guys been in discussions at all in the cemetery about removing the fence line and possibly getting rid of most of the half-cut down trees that are stuck in the fences?
They, yeah, they have talked about it. It's privately owned, the, I think, two years ago now, I lose track with 2020 being such a dead year. We did meet with the new management on that same topic. And so they, they, to their credit, they're the ones that have done a better job of cutting back a lot of that overgrowth along there. And it is in their long-term plan to replace that fence completely. But we still think it's best to just give it a buffer space, maybe two to three feet off that fence. And, and put our own path along there that, that really can't be bothered. But the short answer is it's privately held and yes, they do have that in their plans.
Is there any talk of possibly removing the fence?
No, they still want to keep the fence in place. They, they're, they're not really open to removing any of the fences along there. They like the controlled access that they have right now between the, the yard access, as well as the, the grand entrance at 12 and Woodward. So they don't have, in our conversation with them, they don't have any thoughts to, to remove that fence and just kind of have it be open space.
I mean, the only reason I bring it up, it's kind of an ice, so when you drive down with all those trees cut off halfway and dead in the fencing, so. It would be nice to have a walkway there though. It's one of Marty's ideas.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I have another question. There, there are budget items for drainage at most of the playgrounds and parks. Is that is that in the nature of maintenance and upkeep or is that replacing catch basins and you know, I forget the term, but the drains that go into the city drains.
Yeah. So in both in the both the areas where you see it in this plan, it's it's in this plan because it's a new installation.
Okay. And is that likely to lead appreciably to increase stormwater volume going into the city's drains?
It would, it would probably increase it. Yes, sir. We don't have, at least I have not seen a calculation on how much that would be yet.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. Is there a plan for moving over to electric vehicles? Like, are you looking to have the carport and then start swapping over? Or is it just kind of something that you're like, we know eventually we want to do, but we don't have a solid plan yet?
More the latter.
Erin, is there anyone that wants to speak from the public on this?
Don't see any hands raised and I haven't received any emails.
Okay. Additional questions or discussion from the commission? Do we need two motions on this? Or just one?
Ms. Burns, I knew we just need one for the recommendation. Isn't that right, Matt?
Yeah, and I think inherent to the recommendation would be an approval.
So if there's no further discussion, does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council with the capital improvement plan.
Support.
Okay, any other discussion? Erin, could you call the role, please?
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much, Matt, for coming and presenting that to us. Thanks.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay, um, so we have a couple of discussion items. One is a continuation of a previous discussion. Permitted uses in the downtown district, specifically entertainment uses. Do you want to give us the intro on that, Erin, please?
Yes, I'd like to reference my April 20th, 2020, 2021 review letter. This comes, returns to you from beginning of our discussion last month, which was born out of our discussion from the previous month related to office uses on the first floor in the downtown district. Now, when we were looking at that, in addition to that, we were looking at other uses that we could potentially expand it to. I e, you know, entertainment uses, things of that nature. So I have included a number of things in in this memo. First and foremost, I gave you a list of all the principal permitted uses as well as the special land uses in the downtown district. So that way you can get an idea of where we are right now with what we're allowed to have in in that district. So by rights, we're allowed to have or permitted to have restaurants, bars and cocktail lounges, retail uses, dance studios, health clubs, food uses, movie theaters, etc. So we do have a few uses that do encapsulate some of the entertainment. However, as I note a little bit further down, the the nature of entertainment and and people going out has changed a little bit. People aren't just going to the movie theater or going to concerts exclusively. Now there's kind of a market for these entertainment group activities that are art or activity based. So painting with a twist, art participate was discussed last month, as well as things like escape rooms or they have like these demolition rooms as well. So in the downtown plan, I reference that the downtown district is located in what is designated as the downtown core character area. And as part of the zoning strategy for the downtown plan, it is suggested that a mix of independent retail, service, dining and entertainment uses should be permitted. So this suggests to me that the the intent of the downtown plan in this traditional downtown core is to have people come, have dinner, go do an activity of some sorts and really spend the day, spend the night, spend the evening in in downtown Berkeley. Now, our zoning ordinance does not have definition specifically for either commercial recreational or entertainment. Now, one of the uses that is designated is the commercial recreation uses. And this gives a list of examples, bowling alleys, billiards, indoor archery and other similar forms of indoor commercial recreation. So this is open to interpretation on whether or not something like painting with a twist, which is a sit down, activity based, art based type of activity, is that in the same line as an indoor archery range or a school of dance or indoor tennis courts? So I did look through the the planners dictionary for suggestions and definition language. Sometimes that can be a good, a good starting point when we're trying to figure out where things things align. So I did include a definition for recreation, commercial like indoor activities as well as entertainment for commercial indoor entertainment establishments. And these come from various places throughout our country. So these are adopted ordinance language that's already in existence elsewhere in the world. So it gives us a good base of how we want to go. And like I said, you know, the, if we were decided to go through this, you know, the the visiting the the movie theater or concert are still very popular outings. If we were to allow a themed or art based creative entertainment activity use in the downtown district, it should be met with a similar use or something of that nature to encapsulate other uses that that go along that same vein. I did look at some comparable communities, Ferndale and Madison Heights. I did look at, I was looking at places that had like painting with a twist or these kind of escape room zones. There is one up in Rochester Hills as well. But theirs was a little bit complex because it's in the business district, but it's also as part of an overlay. And and I didn't want to get too far down down into the weeds on that. So these are just two that are are local and it kind of shows how they regulate. Painting with a twist is is looked at as an art music craft studio. And these are permitted in the CDVD, C2, C3, MXD, MX2 districts. Madison Heights, which has like an escape room activity based, that's considered an indoor outdoor recreational business. So those are permitted to be one, B2, B3. And I know that doesn't mean a lot. So I've included the the zoning maps for each of these two communities as well as for Berkeley. So you can get an idea as to where where they're located in the community and which corridors they're located on. So with that, the the recommendation is to to look at some of this language and look at these types of uses and see if that's something that we would like to include in the downtown district. And as I mentioned, you know, this would have to come along with a definition as well. But the definition should include something along the lines of these type of uses included but not limited to. So that way it allows some flexibility with potential new business ventures that that haven't been brought to Berkeley or haven't been invented yet. So that way we don't have to come back and continue having discussions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. So we have a couple of things that we need to get into here. I think the first is whether or not this would be a principal permitted use or a special land use. And then some of the more nuanced questions that Erin asked about specific definitions and if we want to attach any additional parameters to a use like this. So what is everyone's initial thought on the special land use versus the principal permitted use?
And if I may, are we still talking about just the entertainment portion stuff? Yes, okay.
I I don't see much difference between painting with a twist and something like a movie theater or comedy club. So I would, I would gear more towards allowing that as a principal use.
I agree with allowing it as a principal use.
Same here. I think it's fine as a principal use.
I think that's great.
I would agree as well. Anyone who doesn't, who objects to that? Okay, so we got the easy part done. Let's move into a little bit more of of the details now. Who wants to start with that? So there was a whole bunch of options provided to us in terms of types of definitions and and how to distinguish things. Does anyone have a clear direction or thought on where they want to go with this? Might be a good jumping off point.
So I just, I just have a question. Can I ask it?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Great. What are some of the sources of information for determining that, you know, these are recreational trends that we should be accommodating? You know, what's the database that we're we're drawing from? Or what are the databases that we're we're getting this information from? Is it, is it in the, is it, you know, planning in the planning community? Is this something that these ideas are circulating or just where is this really coming from, I guess, is my question?
Are you talking about the types of you?
Yeah, you would preface by saying, you know, the trends in recreation are changing. I'm just wondering where that where you're getting that from. Is that, is that planning, community, information or where's that coming from? It's just a question.
Yeah, and that's just, it comes a lot from my own observations of the different uses that are coming up elsewhere in the community. So not just our community, but other communities. So the painting with a twist, like I mentioned, has been become very popular. The escape rooms have been very popular. There's the the new one is a like a smash room. You go in and you can take a sledgehammer and you start smashing things. And I've never been, but it looks amazing.
I'm sure.
Those types of, you know, and and those types of going to a place with a group of friends, doing an activity together. Those types of of uses I've seen. You know, we've had inquiries here here in our our community with with new types of businesses that our ordinance just isn't quite, quite ready for. It's it's more geared towards the standard. You go out, you go to dinner and a movie and that's your evening. But these types of things are becoming, I've got, I've received more and more inquiries about them in over the past year.
Like, I guess our definition should kind of revolve in around the idea of communal activities or group activities, games. You know, language like that, I think I'm just offering that as a kind of a starting point.
And and these can all be group activities. However, it's not exclusively. So, you know, I could go to an escape room myself and say, hey, I just want to go just for fun. Or go to a painting with a twist kind of thing, just on a on a regular. So it doesn't have to be a group group activity.
You know, I just, you'd include that, include the word group, I think, to convey what you're offering or what's allowed. I guess that's my thought on it.
A question that I want to throw out there. So I'm looking right now, the 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 thing, the part that you referenced, Erin, at the beginning under the entertainment uses heading where it talks about the list of permitted uses, commercial recreational centers such as bowling alleys, billiard halls, indoor archery ranges, skating rinks, etc. Is that from our current ordinance, correct?
That is. It's not in the definition section. It is in one of the the district regulations of what's permitted in that in that district. Yes. But that is from our ordinance, yes.
Okay, so this gets a little bit gray, but to me, an athletic or health club is a lot different than an escape room. And I don't necessarily think those two things should be grouped together. The part where it gets a little bit like a gray area is a bowling alley. You know, some might say that's a sport facility like an athletic or health club might be. And some might say it's more of a recreational facility. I don't know if it makes sense to separate the two or not. What does everyone think of that?
If I may?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I included the commercial recreation uses here really as kind of like a, this is what where things are allowed. And this is how commercial recreation is grouped. So obviously, this doesn't include the the things we're talking about. Like you said, the the bowling alley and this does not align with an escape room or with a painting with a twist kind of thing. So that's why, but I did include that because I I wanted to make sure that that we all knew that there was a space for commercial recreation. And it was somehow identified in our in our ordinance. But I I don't think that they necessarily align together.
Okay.
I have a question. So with the with the entertainment commercial recreation uses, would that then, since we all agreed it should be a principal permitted use in the downtown district, would that just be like bullet number 12 within the 138417? And then it's further defined? Is that kind of, is that, is that the way it would lay out within ordinance or within the zoning here?
I'm sorry, could you say that, say that part again?
Sorry, okay, yeah. So on the the first page of your memo, the principal permitted uses for the downtown district, there's 11 principal uses. So on the the agreement that entertainment uses should be a principal permitted permitted use in downtown district, would it just be number 12?
Yes.
Right? Okay. And then now that now the question is how to break out entertainment uses and define it?
I think the question is how to include and define entertainment uses.
Okay, so it could almost, like in the example you have on page two, there's from the planning dictionary, there's recreation, commercial indoor, entertainment, commercial indoor and an entertainment establishes. So we could just really take this like deeper with more bullet points like 12, 13, 14, whatever on the permitted uses in the downtown district.
Yes, so we could add as many examples as we would want. Like Erin said, we would want to include that, including but not limited to, in case something none of us could ever imagine. You know, becomes the next big thing.
Okay. And then my last question is, so within that entertainment uses, like the beginning paragraph, like like you had mentioned, this is from our current ordinance on commercial recreational uses. So but that seems like that's in reference to the LB Gateway, Coolidge and 12 Mile District? Okay, so even if we're talking about specifically the downtown district and defining entertainment uses into however many categories we want, shouldn't it kind of be throughout all the districts and the change be reflective of those as well? Or?
I think so. Joe, I think that's, that's a very good point.
Like, because the downtown district on the map is just really like three little areas. But I can see that, like if we if we expand the definition of entertainment uses to however many we want, it seems like in in the Gateway, Coolidge, 12 and local business, we would want to make sure that those are adequately addressed within the within the principal permitted uses for those areas too. Right?
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's I just wanted to clear up because it, you know, even though we, I know this initially came up about the downtown district, but it sort of seems like it expands just because come from entertainment, well, how, what's the term? Sorry, commercial recreational is is allowed other places too. is, uh, is allowed other places too. So.
I'm sure, if I may?
So we identified the downtown district specifically because we already have the downtown plan in place for this. Now, our master plan, you know, I, I have every confidence that they're going to expand the entertainment uses or want to expand those in, in other districts. But there has been discussion about expanding those uses along the 11 Mile District. So my question to you is, do you want to do the downtown district now? And then look at the rest of the districts when that master plan is complete? And so that way we can do all of them at the same time? Or do the ones that we have in place now, knowing that we may have to come back and, and add more or, or change things up a little bit? And I, and I defer to your, to what you, you would like to do on that one.
So I would be in favor of making sure that we're consistent across the board and doing them all at once. I know that there's a little bit of time in there. What does the rest of the commission think?
I, I agree with you.
I, I agree with that. Instead of doing them separate or piecemeal, we might as well just do them all together and be done with it.
I agree, and I, I don't think there's any, you know, looking at, and the 11 Mile was brought up. I didn't even think of that until that was just brought up. But, you know, looking at these four, five, six districts, you know, th- there's probably nothing in this list or these lists that we'd want to exclude from maybe one or two of them. There may be something, but that's something we may want to look at. But I, I'd think they, they, in general, would all fit in any one of those districts. The uses.
I agree with that.
And I mean, on that, if we're changing principal permitted uses in, um, our downtown or, or rather, I would also like to talk about at the same time dealing with the, um, outdoor patio stuff. And so that we don't have to have two separate hearings as to changing something from a special use, you know, what we're allowing for principal use.
And another thing here, if you look at the list, there's a, um, a matter of scale of some of these things. When you read, you know, art gallery or studio, blah, 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 compared to arena, arena could be hugely larger than, uh, uh, than what we may envision as art gallery. Now, you know, I don't know what arena means. It's not, you know, and even, even get into conference center, gymnasiums are large. I don't know if there's something we need to consider as far as, uh, the scale of some of these, these, I definitely don't want an arena that wipes out, you know, five or 10% of the, the, the residences along 11 Mile or something. We're not looking for that at all, I don't think. But, uh, we may want to look at this list and think about it in terms of scale of what some of these items are also.
That's a good point, Marty. I, I don't think we can accommodate an arena or a conference center.
But a conference, you know, um, um, arenas could be considered a conference center.
That's true.
But, but, uh, and we're losing that, our conference center. So, but again, it's just a matter of maybe, you know, large, you know, small to large. And I don't think we have to rank them in any order, but there may be some things here that just don't. We know the bowling alley is large, especially ours. So anyway, I, I just want to bring that up, that there's a, there's a, there's a, quite a difference in scale of these, these, these functions as, uh, that are listed here.
When I look at the, the three definition languages, I kind of feel like what I'd like to see is some mix between the first one and the third one. I feel like the first one, I don't just want like a straight list. So we feel like, you know, I want kind of a definition and then some examples. And kind of like an example of kind of main ideas, right? A studio or, you know, but still.
Lisa, maybe the third definition, but with more examples on what's included. I agree. I think that the third definition is, is general enough that it doesn't exclude anything, but it would be nice to, to expound on it a little bit.
And are we comfortable with entertainment uses or entertainment establishments as the catchall for how they're, they're termed? Or do we want to look at that in a different way?
Well, you have several things here. You, you know, entertainment is one thing. Recreation as in sports, you know, swimming, tennis, skating, and who knows what might get built. You also have the artistic items, uh, and you could even throw the, you know, instrumental music, I mean, things here. And you have a assembly. Now, these are all kinds of assemblies because you're asking people to come here. There may be a better way to group them or list, or maybe they're just random, you know, go. But I think entertainment establishment, which could be all encompassing, recreation, entertainment, artistic or assembly, however we want to word it, we could probably do it all in one. I don't think we want to try to nitpick three or four different categories. Might be, um, might be best just include them all in one. But they are different. I mean, you look at this list, there's stuff here that are all completely different in, in many, many ways.
Maybe the way to think of it is, do they all have the same type of impact?
Well, that's where I got with the large thing. That's a huge impact. You know, maybe parking is an impact like everything else in town. Where you have a big, uh, uh, a large, a large function where a lot of people are leaving at the same time as opposed people who come and go, you know, as a nightclub or a dancing or whatever it might be. So, um, that may come into play.
Is, is there, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to create at least a minimum of like two or three and kind of look at the scale, like Marty mentioned, the impact, like Kristen, you mentioned, whether it be parking, hours of operation? I don't know, you know, it seems like those would be logical things just to step through to make sure that, like, like items are, are like items under the use. I don't know if that gains us anything, like if it bolt number 12 is just all encompassing of all of these, is, is there a particular reason why we would want to parse them out separately? I guess that's the question I also think about.
On that note, um, as, as matters stand now with the same square retail foot requirement, apply to each different kind of activity or business for purposes of, of, of calculating the parking requirement. Is that realistic? You know, if it's a concert venue, you're going to need more parking than, than, you know, a painting venue, I would.
Absolutely, absolutely. Each one of these you can find through, you know, sample codes or, or, uh, you know, Erin, you can help me here, but these all have different parking requirements by square foot or seats or, or, or whatever.
So we talked about redoing the parking, all of it, right? At some point, not, um, but I, I agree. If we add some of these things in and you theoretically have an indoor tennis club, it's going to have a lot different requirement, like Mark was saying, than a concert venue. Do we, I, I hate to do this, but do we want to wait until the parking? We can match the two up so that we're not adding in uses or considering uses that we don't address in the parking ordinance?
I feel like that might be too long, though.
It could be, yeah. Erin, what do you, do you have any feedback on that?
I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, uh, Madam Chair, because they do, they do go in line. And, and, and this would be something we'd have to look at together. However, I, I do know that there are some, uh, interested business owners who have expressed interest in these types of entertainment uses. And given the fact that the parking may not be done for quite some time, I, I'd hate, you know, you know, next week, it'll be done next week, it's fine. I, I would be concerned about making people wait too long for, for something.
I, I, I agree. If we have people who are interested and ready to do this, I don't want to hold them up so we can do a wholesale review of every parking standard in the city.
Yes.
So theoretically, if we did have a painting with a twist come in, how would they be able to calculate their parking right now? What would they use?
Well, how did anticipate calculate their parking? It's almost the exact same thing, actually.
Yeah, that was, that was before me. I'd have to go back and look at what, what they did. But, uh, something like that, we could look at the, the retail. A, a strictly retail space is one parking space per 225 square feet of usable floor area. The usable floor area is 70% of the gross, so that would be a, that would be kind of where I would, that would be where I would start.
This Mark again is, I have no idea what kind of businesses that are under contemplation. I don't even think I want to know right now. I, I'm just, um, wondering if we're going to find ourselves between a rock and a hard place when it comes to calculating parking for all different kinds of activities like this, if we don't have a, a, a standard right in the, um, in the code. I, I mean, you know, whatever, I'll accept whatever answer you've got to that, but I, it's crossing my mind.
And, and to that end, for the downtown district, any business or property that's located within 500 feet of a municipal lot is exempt from providing onsite parking. So technically, any business that goes into the downtown district is exempt from, from providing their own on-street parking. So whether it's one for 20, 220, now, we, we would have to get into that if we expand it to the Coolidge, the local business, the Woodward districts. But, um, strictly speaking for, for the downtown, they are exempt from providing their own, their own site parking.
And is that, is the downtown district the spaces where we have some current interest in this? It's just that district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just for part, realize a lot of these are more, more assembly uses than they are commercial uses. Although there's, they can both be, they can be both, but commercial as in a, as in a retail sense, or even one of these little painting with a twist type places. That's, or, you know, a dance, dance lesson facility. They're completely different than some of these other things when we start talking about, you know, arena, conference center, uh, and things like that. But the parking requirements are wholly different too.
So the advantage would be of just adding it to the downtown district now is we don't have to tackle the parking yet.
Correct.
Could be, yep.
But we would take, you know, anything that we would put under this umbrella of the entertainment uses would exclude something. As Commissioner Smith said, you know, in the arena, the auditorium, things that would overpower the existing municipal parking. You know, the, the spaces, you know, and the properties down there aren't big enough for those types of, uh, uses anyway. So those wouldn't be something I would, uh, I would include in this definition. These were all from the planner's dictionary and these were all just, uh, just ideas, uh, to get, to get our conversation started.
So based on the conversation you've heard so far then, Erin, I mean, it sounds like we're, we're mostly in agreement on a general definition. You know, we'd originally talked and I, I still think it's cleanest to address all of this at once with all of the different districts at one time. However, it's a lot more challenging then if we have to, to talk about looking at parking standards. And I don't want to hold up any potential businesses because we're dealing with this in other districts. What is the thought of the rest of the commission on that? I know we said generally we'd like to do it all at once, but hearing that we have potential businesses who could benefit from a small tweak to the ordinance, um, now, instead of embarking on something that's going to take a little bit more time. What do you guys think?
That makes sense.
Yeah, if we can hook, if we can hook somebody in, you know, the, the, the easy way. I don't have any objection to that. I mean, you know, there's no one set way to go. You have to be responsive to the circumstances, so.
So are you saying just approve it for downtown for right now and then go back to the other areas? Is that okay? Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
And, and is this as simple as putting a number 12 there and putting entertainment uses? And then putting a parentheses and just listing entertainment uses?
Yeah, we might want to add something to the definition section too, but yes, it's pretty much that simple.
Could be that simple.
So my question there is, is it really, I mean, for what we're thinking that we're going to add for this is, are we going to be introducing uses that we really have no idea what we would ask for parking for them for? I mean, is that really a, a big issue as far as making it across the board?
So if, I think Lisa, if we're talking about like escape rooms or painting studios or things like that, I, I think that their parking needs would be similar to some of the commercial indoor recreation uses that we already have listed. Um, if we were talking about some, like a, you know, like a, a venue for bands to play or something, that's, yeah, that's going to be something totally different. So I don't think we would want to in the, in the definition or in the including but not limited to uses, include anything that, that would exceed any parking capacity, which is, I think, what you said, right, Erin?
Yes.
So once you, once we came back, or you came back with the, the suggested language, I, I think that you're right, Lisa, we would have to think about each one that's listed and be comfortable with the fact that our parking could theoretically handle those because they're similar to things that might already be included. Does that make sense?
Maybe, yeah, so, and I, not to give you a ton more work, Erin, but maybe, I mean, because I, I would love to have it across the board, like make it a very simple definition and have it be across the board. So maybe when I come back, I mean, if it's not asking too much, kind of like, go, you know, for this use, you know, we have something or, you know, if there's any conflict areas from whatever ones you're listing. Does that make sense?
The only other, the only other question I have with focusing just on the downtown district and setting up definitions now, is there anything that like doesn't fit that is an entertainment but doesn't fit with that district? Like, I mean, just throwing it out there, like this indoor archery range is listed. So is that something that seems, I'm thinking gun range, archery range, like if those are considered commercial recreational uses and we open up the definition for this, is, is that, is that a good thing to have in the downtown district? Like, is it, are we being very prescriptive with the uses or really open it for the downtown district?
So I think that's a really good point, um, Joe. Because that's, and that's kind of what I was saying, and I think Marty, you said it too. A lot of these uses are very different from one another. I think in our including but not limited to list, we would want to stick more to the entertainment type uses and not necessarily list out tennis clubs and indoor archery ranges and conference centers.
Okay, yeah, and I'm thinking not, not just, oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. And I'm not thinking just because of the parking or the scale. I'm thinking also because of the actual use. Like, um, ju- just if it's not to the character of what, which should be there.
Yeah, I agree. I completely agree. Okay, Erin, does that give you enough direction for right now?
It does, yes.
Good.
So I'll bring back this item next month, um, with, uh, some, some cleaned up language and, um, look at how we can, maybe some parking suggestions, certainly not what we're going to be doing. But if we were to be including these in the Coolidge 11 Mile District, how that could be comparable? Would that work for you, Ms. Kemptner? Yes, that, that works?
Yes.
And there's no one that wanted to comment on this from the public, correct?
Don't see any hands raised or emails, no.
Okay, so we have one other discussion item, state licensed residential facilities. So what do we have to consider for this?
Okay, so, um, I have included my April 20th, 2021 review letter. So this comes to you because we have recently, um, received some inquiries from the public to open in-home daycare centers. These have previously been looked at as a home and regulated as a home occupation, which is not regulated. By, by definition, which I include here, it's an occup- By by definition, which I include here, it's an occupation or profession customarily carried on by an occupant of the dwelling unit as a secondary use, which is clearly incidental to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. There shall be no exterior display other than one non-illuminated nameplate, which is not more than two square feet in area, which may be attached to the building, no stock and trade commodity sold. And then it stipulates nursing homes, tea rooms, tourist homes, beauty parlors, retail business, or trade shall not be considered home occupations. So in that, in in the single-family residential districts, um any type of home occupation does not require any kind of planning commission, city council, or any other approvals. However, it does state that nursery schools, day nurseries, and child centers do require special land use approval. However, based on the site regulations and when we went through for the office districts uh last two years ago. These are mainly speaking to commercial facilities, so anything more than thirteen children where they're um they have multiple rooms, they have lots of children, and they have a a large area to accommodate. Now, there are two acts that regulate uh nursery schools, day nursery, and childcare centers and childcare homes, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which references the Childcare Organizations Act from nineteen seventy-three, and I've included this in your in your packet. So it gives definitions for what a childcare center is. Mainly a facility other than a private residence, so that's where um the childcare center is not deemed to be as part of a residence. It is a facility, um a family childcare home and a group childcare home, and this is where we're looking to you for for a discussion. So I noted here that there are no um in in-home childcare providers licensed by Laura in the community. When I looked at this, there wasn't, but under further review, there are four in our community, three of which are I'm sorry, there are four childcare centers, three of which are located in elementary schools. One is Teachable Moments, which is located on Twelve Mile, and there are three others which are considered to be in-home childcare facilities. One has a capacity of six up to six children, and the other one has a capacity up to twelve. So I apologize.
Are those in residential areas?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are licensed with Laura.
Yeah, because these are highly regulated. These are highly.
From Laura, yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yes, they are. Um, the 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 the, I'm sorry, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act does allow for cities and um villages to regulate in-home childcare and other state residential facilities. Anything up to six children should be permitted by right. Anything over six, so seven to twelve children, the city has the option to require special land use approval. So like I said, this was intended to get ahead of 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 big issues, and I I I don't foresee that becoming becoming a a huge issue, but I wanted to provide information to you so we could have this discussion while we were aware of it. And I did include the regulations from a number of other communities, and like I said, this encompasses all state licensed residential facilities. This is not exclusively to the in-in-home childcare. This includes adult foster care, foster care homes, family care homes, things of that nature, so. But it's all under that umbrella of the state licensed residential facility. So I've included the regulations from the city of Clausen, Rochester Hills, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park. So there's a lot here to to go through and to to digest, and I I I know this is the first time that this has come come before you, so this is a lot of information at once. But this is something that if we want to begin regulating it outside of a home occupation, this would be where we would start. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So right off the bat, just to backtrack a bit, um, we've been getting some, what what can you tell me again what precipitated this? Are there complaints from neighbors that are near these homes? Or is it just that people have been inquiring, and it's like, oh, we don't really have anything on this?
Right, yeah, so um I had, you know, I've had a couple of inquiries here and there, and it was just a a home regulated as a home occupation. So there really wasn't anything here, and as we're looking into it a little bit more before it becomes, and I was saying it would, but before it becomes one on every street, is this something we want to to look at?
So it's my understanding from state law that the family daycare homes up to six children have to be principal permitted uses, is that right?
That's right.
That would apply to group homes up to six adults, et cetera?
Yes.
We have the ability to make seven to twelve special land use?
Yes.
And put things like distance requirements cannot be within so many feet of another licensed facility for seven to twelve residents?
Correct. Yep, and screening measures and and things of that, making sure they have a sufficient outdoor outdoor space for for recreation, yes.
So I I know Marty and said that this is highly regulated by the state, so I I do think they get into things, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, for the state in terms of how much outdoor recreation space you need for kids and things like that.
Oh, yeah, and that in some of these she, you know, Erin handed us some things, but from, I guess it's Clausen, Rochester Hills, so on and so forth, and if you read through them, they're very confusing. Unless you put them all side by side, they they're almost mirrors of each other, because these are the regulations. And they get into a hundred fifty square feet or ever whatever per child or whatever it is, so um but and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but it these are so similar because that's what the state requires.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So my concern with getting into some of these specifics that are listing more or less what the state requires is if the state regulations change and we don't keep up to date with those regulations, then our ordinance is in conflict with the state requirements and really becomes obsolete. Unless we require more than the state does. So I I don't have a problem, you know, looking into some of this, I think, and and putting some regulations or making some of these special land uses. But I don't think I would want to get into the specifics of of laying out things that the state already takes care of. I think it's a duplication of efforts unless we have specific concerns about screening or distancing or something like that.
So I have a question here. Does the state law have anything to say about local regulations? Some laws preclude local communities from enacting more or less stringent regulations than the state reg- regulations, and state regulations are exclusive. It is is what's the case with these these kinds of regulations? Do do we know?
Well, the the state allows allows and requires up to six children in an in-home daycare facility to be a principal permitted use. Anything beyond that, seven to twelve, they allow for the local municipality to require a special land use if they so deem fit. There are there are requirements with, you know, compatibility with the with the neighborhood. You can require screening. You have to require some type of uh outdoor area for them uh to play, um pick up and drop off hours of operation. That's all that's part of it, and that's part of the special land use review.
Well, what I'm what I'm asking is, can can Berkeley go beyond state requirements pertaining to minimum number of feet per child uh type and 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 location and size of fencing uh and so forth, uh, you know. I I what I'm trying to do is understand whether there's any point in 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 Berkeley regulating these uses anymore so than than we have. I mean, i- do we have concerns going over and above what the state requirements cover? And and, you know, it may not be possible legally to you know, to enact more stringent requirements, too. There are a lot of laws like that. I'm I'm not sure this one is or not, but it's worth that that's something to consider.
This would all be vetted through the the city attorney's office, and and certainly I wasn't, wouldn't be suggesting anything that would require anything more above and beyond what the the state is requiring.
Okay.
So to Mark's point, then, um, we have the ability to take childcare for seven to twelve residents and group home facilities for seven to twelve residents and make them special land uses. And we can add additional conditions to those you know, as were permitted by state law. We haven't had any complaints and any right, not that we're aware of any complaint on any of these uses. Have, did you do um a search, Erin, to see not just the childcare but group homes that are registered within the city?
The the in-home childcare?
Not the childcare.
Adult foster, say, Sid, are you implying adult foster care?
Yep, or adult group homes.
No, I did not.
So I'm guessing there's some here. I would be shocked if there aren't. So the first question of the commission then is whether or not we want to make childcare for seven to twelve and in group homes for seven to twelve a special land use.
Well, let me ask a a a question, Erin. For one to six children, is that considered a home occupation?
That would, I mean, to a certain degree, yeah, I mean, it's permitted, it's it's required to be permitted by right in the single-family residential district. So in that sense, it would be considered, it could be considered a home occupation, and that's how these have been regulated, whether it's one child or twelve children. These all have been regulated under the umbrella of the home occupation.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, so, okay.
And and that's, this is also in-home daycare, so it's regardless of age, right?
Yes. No, well, in-home in-home child daycares are, you know, they have age limits.
But it could be adult daycare and other things, too.
What I'm driving at is do we have the authority to prohibit the the larger homes and the larger uses? It doesn't sound like it.
No, we don't have the authority to do it, but we have the authority to make them special land uses and to attach conditions like distancing requirements and screening.
Oh, but well, that's that's was also my question. Those the state has comprehensive regulations about screening and distancing and so on, I believe. And can we vary can we vary those requirements? I I don't understand if we can or not.
I don't.
Yeah, I think that'd be a slippery slope.
I don't think the state has distancing requirements.
There's some in these, and I don't know, I don't recall what they refer, which which type of care they refer to, but there are some buried in here somewhere.
Yeah, I got a few statements about this. Well, first off, I have a very, very good knowledge of in-home daycares. As far as daycares, it's fine. They're just daycares. People are there during the day and then they leave. It's the adult foster cares that I have some good knowledge of because I have in-laws that used to run around their house. Now, I will say the torment to the neighbors was not pleasant. The people who were living there were not very pleasant. And I feel that the people that live around an adult foster care house should know what's going on. When you have a situation like that with people close head injuries, drug injuries, drug issues, there's a lot of things that happen around that house that do cause a lot of problems for the neighbors. I I think it should be highly regulated for the adult foster care specifically. As far as the daycare, the people come in in the morning, they leave in the afternoon. That's not a problem. It's a twenty-four-seven operation that causes a lot of problems. But as far as the state regulations, Laura does regulate everything in regards to those houses, but the problems happen after people that are there and they go home and they go to bed at night. The adults that are in foster care kind of run the, you know, run wild at night and do some really, really crazy things. So I I think some regulations need to be put into place. I would not recommend adult foster care for anything over six people because I've seen what happens once you get more than six people. And this is from personal experience, and I I would highly recommend no adult foster cares over twenty-four hours over six people because it's just gonna be a nightmare for the neighbors.
So Matt, we have to by state law allow seven to twelve as a special use.
Okay.
That's as far as we could go with a you know, limit, a limit. So we could, we could attach condition.
I would make some very, very stringent standards, and I would make it also an approval by the neighbors to have this happen because they're the ones who are gonna pay a serious price. Their cars are gonna be destroyed, their properties next door, that they're gonna wake up in the morning, see people sitting on their front lawn or in their front patio. There there's gonna be some things that happen that the neighbors are not gonna appreciate.
I I need the city attorney to tell me we've got the authority to actually do those things. I'm not at all convinced right now. We we can control any of that, but I don't know the law in this area, so I don't know, but we need to find out, I'd say.
Well, the city attorney, I mean, you're you're gonna have to talk to the city attorney about this anyways, but if we can make a more stringent standard. The daycares are the daycares. That's not that difficult, but it's a twenty-four-hour service that creates some problems.
So maybe the first question we have is, we need to know what we are allowed to regulate from the city attorney. I I know you can regulate distancing, and I know you can regulate things like screening. But what else are we allowed to comment on and add conditions for?
Yeah, and and just.
One of the things to main road could, so I think those are the types of things we probably need to know before we can weigh in on what would be appropriate.
I think it should, um, just to further Matt's point. I mean, really, Kristen, your your initial question is the special permitted uses. I mean, it should be for the childcare, too, even if it's just daycare, because I mean, who would want to be sandwiched if you're working from home between two homes that have twelve kids each? Like, that could be an issue for someone that's the neighbor in between. You know, I I the one through six sounds like, you know, there's really no choice, but like definitely the special, like both of these sort of situations should we should look at, and and I don't think one is really worse than the other ultimately, you know, I mean, there's 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 different scales, I guess, on that, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we're gonna make one a special and juice, we should make both.
I I can speak on a childcare facility, so my kids grew up in an in-home childcare facility in two different homes. And in general, the people there don't create too many problems with the neighbors. They're very quiet. The kids play in the backyard. I mean, it's no different than what goes on in my backyard when I have nine little boys or little girls running around my backyard with all my with all their friends. It's no different, but it's the childcare is not that big of an issue. It's when you get to the twenty-four-seven operation, I think that really impacts the community.
Yeah, I guess the only way I'm thinking it's different is it is a business, so, you know, it's it's an ex-service being exchanged for money, so anytime that's involved, even if it's just kids during the day, you know, there could be issues.
The only issue I ever ran into is parking.
Yeah, I I live by a school, so parking's always an issue by me. There's always teachers and parents park everywhere in front of my house, so.
It's probably me one day most of the time.
So I feel conflicted as to like whether we, you know, take this on or or not, because it hasn't been a problem. However, there's another part of me that says I'd like to have something on the books, so if conflicts arise between neighbors, there's like clear-cut things you can point to that says, you know, like they've done all this stuff that we say they have to do, so they're fine.
I I I think we're all trying to head down a path that none of us know a whole lot about. Would it be best to have the city attorney or somebody do a presentation for us of what's allowed and or what's mandatory? Yeah. And everything else, before we even, you know, we're just speculating here, and, you know, I know a little bit about it. Couple of you folks know a little bit about it, but I am no expert and nobody, I I think from what I hear, nobody is. And we really should have someone set it out for us so we know what we're looking at.
What's our level of discretion? That's that's what I'm wanna know.
If I may, these were all things that I have on my list of of continuing on the next step of discussion. It was a matter of we wanted to continue moving forward into this path. It sounds like it sounds like we do.
I think it's quite unusual that we don't have this regulated. I I guess I haven't seen a lot of zoning ordinances out there that don't address this. So it seems like it makes sense, yes. But I would agree, I think some information or even a presentation would be would be better by the city attorney. I mean, this isn't a big time crunch, right? We don't have any complaints on the books, but it makes sense probably to to put something in there should any issues arise.
I think Kristen's right. I mean, this isn't, this isn't a situation where they'll just act like it doesn't happen, because it does happen, and we should update our ordinance to address it, but we need to know what we're need to update it to first, I think.
Great.
I'll set then, Erin, for that one. Okay. So speaking of updates, we also have an updated 2021 calendar with some work sessions, I'm assuming to finalize the master plan.
Yes, and I apologize, this is this is my my night, but I after this was published, I spoke with Megan, and the master plan won't be ready for the May 4th work session, so, I mean, we can still meet and discuss about things next week if you like, but that one's not necessarily going to be going to be needed, because there won't be any master plan to to look over. The plan is to set to you later later this month. I'm sorry?
Star Wars Day.
Well, we can meet for happy hour if you want.
There you go.
But yes, these were, these were included to facilitate the the final, the final finaling of the master plan document.
So if we're not going to do May the 4th, do we need to tack a third one on after the July then, or no, we won't need that?
I don't think we need that. Hopefully, the plan is to have that all finalized by then, and so then it will go for public comment, and then the public hearing. All of those will have to be done at the the formal meetings, the regular meetings, not not any more work sessions. So these were included if we needed to go back and do some tweaking and heavy lifting, but for the most part, it's not a lot of that has been has been done already. So I don't think we need to add add another one into into August.
Okay, Erin, when might we expect to get a draft of the master plan to look at, just so I put in my busy schedule?
Right, well, the plan is hopefully maybe next week. I've got a I've got a conference call with Megan tomorrow to go over everything, so, I mean, they've been, they've been writing like crazy over the last couple of days. It just wasn't going to be ready for for the work session next. Well, it wasn't going to be ready to to give you enough time to digest the entire document before before we needed to discuss it fully. So it was better to to wait a couple more weeks rather than wait a whole nother month of waiting to read, so.
So we expect the, we expect a draft maybe next week?
I think she said, the last time we talked, I think she said the beginning of May, so I would expect next week. If not, I will, I will reach out to all of you with the with the final date if it's not going to be ready.
That's fine, just you throw a baby on top of all that, that's fine.
So you need a motion from us to adopt this amended calendar with the exclusion of May 4th, right?
Yes.
I move to adopt this amended calendar with the exclusion of May 4th.
I support Lisa's motion.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Sorry. Um, Mitch?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yeah.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes. Okay, so we're at the end of the agenda pretty much now. We have liaison reports, and why don't we just wrap that in with commissioner and staff comments? So does anyone have anything that they would like to report?
I did it on the DDA meeting. It was mostly talk about the budget. Really, all it was. It was important.
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, they did talk about the crosswalks again. They're still trying to get the crosswalks, and Coolidge taking care of.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Anyone else have anything to report?
Nothing from environmental.
Okay. And no other?
I have a question. Does anybody know if they're going to have the cruise fest this year?
I don't know.
The plan is still yes to have the cruise fest, yes.
That's a good sign.
Yes, we're very excited about that one.
Okay. So I don't have anything else. Erin or Matt, do you have anything else? Nothing?
I already gave you the update about the master plan, so look for that in the in the coming week.
Oh, one more thing, Erin. Hey, I asked about ongoing education. Did you have anything else pop up for ongoing education?
There is a webinar every, well, I think this is the last, every Wednesday, there's been a six-part series on resilience and planning, resilience and planning, so that's been the last couple of Wednesdays from 8:30 to 10:00. They're about an hour and a half a piece, a lot of really good information. I will check, I will verify the dates, and I'll send it to you this evening.
I think I think that series was done last week, Erin.
Was it done last week? Okay, there were six of them, and I can't remember if we were on.
Now, doesn't mean, I didn't look it up yet, but it doesn't mean that they won't have them you know, archived that you can go back and watch them, so I haven't looked that up, but they were, and they had a lot of good information in them.
Yeah, they were very interesting, so I'll look into that and see if I can get to the, send the recorder copies to everybody. There are a couple of other things. I'll send, I'll forward those emails to you again, Matt.
Is the APA still doing the Free Tuesday, the APA recordings?
As far as I know.
Okay, so that's out there, too, then. And I know the Michigan Historic Preservation Network Conference is virtual, and it's coming up, too. It's really low cost. I don't know if that would count towards continuing education. I know that it's available for AICP credits, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into that, and yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, any motions to adjourn, then?
Motion to adjourn.
For a second.
Erin, could you call the roll?
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes. Okay, everyone, we will see you next month.
Everybody. Good night.